Thank you.
Sorry, Moji.
Now you're being recorded.
So I I'm here this morning because I promised you I will get back to you about questions in terms of the short term rentals during the workshop last week.
Yeah.
And that was in regard to the process. The question was, can the commissioners go ahead and process, you know, potentially a new title in our county code? Without going through the planning commission.
Right.
So that question is, it depends on how you want to phrase the short term rental in regard to the the newly adopted RCW sixty four thirty seven about short term rentals. But I I thought about it this weekend, and I think we might run into some issues with the zoning ordinance. Because the way that the zoning ordinance is set up right now is one dwelling per legal parcel in almost all zoning district. It's only one zoning district will allow more than one, and I don't believe we currently have that anywhere in the county, which would be like R three is multifamily residential. We don't have that. And some zoning would just, you know, not allow single family outright, you know, such as general industrial or industrial park, you cannot have that. So it's one drilling per legal parcel. If we have this separate regulations to allow for short term rentals, like, you know, if they meet all those requirements similar to the city of Way Salmon. Lynn talked about, we need to have that as a permitted structure, that means it will trigger some kind of building permit. Building permits will go through planning department. So unless the parcel is vacant, then we can sign off on it, no problem. But if they already have an existing drilling, and if they want to have another structure as a drilling, and only for short term rental purposes, planning will not be able to sign off on that. So right now, if we want to have more than one drilling on a legal parcel, they have to either go through an ADU, which short term rentals were not allowed, or as a farm drilling. And the purpose for that is for farm workers, not for short term rentals. We do have some temporary mobile home that is available out there. But those are grandfather provisions. When we adopted our EDU ordinances in twenty fourteen, the temporary mobile home is no longer, you know, in our zoning code. So my concern is, you may be able to go ahead and proceed with adopting another kind of regulations as a part of the county code. But we will not be able to sign off on that unless the parcel is vacant, have no other drilling on there right now.
Or we open up the zoning codes and get into that next.
Yes, and that would be something that we need to go through the planning commission, go through the public process. When we try to get this ADU in place for over ten fifteen years, there's a lot of concerns with more than one drilling on the parcels. Concerns about traffic, you know, water resources and that kind of thing. And of course, when we open up the zoning ordinance, we have to go through the SEPA process, we have to go through the public process. And those are all doable, you know, we can do it. But I just want to let you know ahead of time, it might be better to go through the zoning code amendment before we go through another, you know, creating a new title. Because if you have that, it's very limited. Passes will be benefits from that condition.
So so what you're saying, let me get this right, is is that if we adopt a new code title for short term rental ordinance, that if somebody wants to use an existing house, you wouldn't be able to sign off on it?
If this is an existing house?
Yeah.
Then it doesn't go through planning, because I'm assuming the new title doesn't, is not administered through planning.
So so we so we could adopt a new ordinance, the ordinance that that's look, that doesn't need to go through planning because it's with existing structures. And if you want to build like a house or something on a parcel of land and then use it, that would be fine.
Right.
The issue is only if you want to use an ADU, which is what Skamania County did. They opened up and amended their comprehensive plan and their zoning because they adopted like our ADU ordinance, and they have the same language. And so then they opened it up, and they did it all at once. Wait, so as long as you're not using an ADU, we could adopt just a short term rental ordinance through its own process.
Right.
And then we want to do with one with one dwelling, of course, with one dwelling. If you want to use the ADU, then that goes through the process.
Or or any other permitted structure, because that was the debate last Thursday.
Right, but I think.
Permitted structures.
If I'm hearing her right, it's one dwelling per parcel. If that's the one you live in, you can't rent that thing over there, whatever it happens to be. Is that what you're saying? Just one dwelling per structure or one dwelling rental per structure?
One dwelling per parcel, right.
You can have one drilling per parcel. And then RCW sixty four thirty seven restricts, so if you want to rent a whole house out, because this is a legal structure, and is the short term rental is administered under a different title, not Title nineteen, the zoning code. So planning will have no say in this because we're not a part of the process. If you want to rent a whole house out. If you want to rent out a room, our zoning ordinance in some zoning districts will already allow that permitted outright. And under the statute is actually not considered as a short term rental.
No.
And so, you know, that that's not the point. So it's whether you want to rent out the whole house as a short term rental.
I guess where I'm I'm understanding it is if I want to live in the house, and I want to rent my tiny home and my chicken coop or whatever we decided the TP though, whatever is over there, you're saying that's a second dwelling.
Yes.
But you can't do that.
Without opening the zoning code.
Sign off.
Because then that with that permit, that application would go to planning, and planning would have to say no, because it's a second dwelling on a parcel, and we are current zoning, other than R three multifamily, doesn't allow more than one residence, because ADUs are not, they're accessory.
Which is why I brought up when we were talking about this, that I want to get in and open up zoning in Title nineteen as well.
I guess in terms of direction, my first thought would be to to keep, when we open up zoning, that can be its own can of worms. And so I would rather build the short term rental what we want the ordinance to be, because it sits in its own title. And then we can do it concurrently or something else, but have something else separately running to do the zoning.
Right, and I'd like to do our own ordinance. So essentially, when they're doing their thing over at planning, they know what we're trying to accomplish. They're not trying to do their own thing. They're they're following our guidance to try to do our thing instead of their thing. So yes, I would agree with that. Okay.
What does that, but what does that mean to you is what I'm.
I assume my building is the one who is the lead on this one. And I did talk with Lynn briefly last Thursday. And I suggest that maybe before we bring this back to the commissioners, like for primary departments, building, planning, public works and health, we need to sit down and really talk about how can we tie everything together? Because I understand the intent, and I think there's a great idea, because we have issues where the problem out there, we need to take care of that. In terms of tying everything together is, we all have our different sets of rules. And we need to make sure there's no conflict.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what it's going to come down to is if we make an ordinance, some of them are not going to be legal because they don't meet the zoning, right, situation, but but no, none of them are legal right now. So what did we really change by making a short term? You know, we might have legalized a couple of them, but then I still think we need to do ours before we push it over, so they know where our guidance is. I don't I don't necessarily want them doing all the legwork and us just saying yes and no on it.
Yeah, I think I'd find, but I think we should write our short term rental ordinance for what we want as far as that piece of it. And if that includes, you know, if we're using the type, you know, the the definition of permitted structures, that I don't necessarily have an issue with that, it's going to be, but the issue is going to be if somebody submits an application, you know, for one, and it says permitted structures, and it's a second dwelling, it's going to get routed to planning, and right now, planning is going to say, no, we can't do that because and so that's where the discussion is really going to be as far as when we look at opening up the zoning code. So I'm fine, because I think that I think the short term rental ordinance should be what we want, not, let's not put that language in there until we change the other thing. Go ahead and put it in there, because it's not going to be the kind of the stuff that's not, can't happen, is still not going to happen now, but probably a lot of stuff that is not, it's not possible to do now, you could, I mean, if you were doing, and so
That's why.
And we also get some, we also get some experience with it legally, you know, that these are getting operated legally, the ones that can now, we legitimize those. Because I suspect when we open the zoning code about, not just the, because you're, if you're opening it, you're opening it. It's, this is going to take some time, because that is going to go through the planning commission, they're going to have public hearings, there's the potential for SEPA. Okay, not potential, I I would, I would give you, you know, ninety nine out of a hundred odds that it will get.
I'm just thinking also with the other departments, if we make ours first, it's going to give guidance to the department heads, whether it's building, planning, health, whatever, on what we're trying to accomplish versus them trying to guess what we're trying to accomplish and set their rules according to guessing what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, the only issue I would have with that is I don't think we should just draft an ordinance, a vacation ordinance that without talking to the departments about what we should be doing.
Right, I just, I know, and I'm not saying we're getting, well.
I mean, I think we could draft, have a draft.
Right, that's what I'm saying, not it it voted in, but I want to draft it. This is what we want. Tell us how we can either accomplish this or what is not going to be allowed.
Right.
I think we're a long ways down that path already.
Right.
The draft that Lynn did, I think that's enough that it would be good for the department heads to get together and look.
I would like to see what we've changed it to to agree to what we've changed it to. I I guess I'd say we've added this and added that, taken out this and switched this around. That was my understanding, that I would like us to kind of look at it, even if it's for five minutes ago, yeah, no, no, this is exactly what we thought we were going to do. And then because we're not handing them the exact papers that Lynn made. If you remember, we agreed with the definition that was in Lynn's paperwork, Dave wanted to change. So we've adopted whatever it was, Skamania County, added permitted structures, and Lynn was supposed to throw something in there about temporary structure. I want to see how that's working before I, right, forward that on for the next, the patch of people to look at is what I'm saying.
Yeah, because I would say we left it, we.
We tweaked it enough.
We did, it's really the draft, right.
I don't think it's going to take three hours of looking at it, five minutes of looking at my answer.
Do we need to do that in public meeting, or do we just need to get Lynn to send it over and?
I think we can provide our, you know, the comments as far as then.
Guys can get moving though.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, as long as is it comes over, I don't know, I mean, we might have to have discussion on what's said too, so.
Right.
We can at least look at it and decide then whether we need to have discussion next week on it. If it looks good to all three of us, then obviously we don't. So I guess it would come down to.
Yeah, I think.
Our answers to Lynn is, and if somebody's a dissenting vote, I'd like to, even if there's one dissenting vote.
Right.
I think we should have discussion.
Well, because I think where we left it on Thursday was, there was at least consensus on, and I think Lynn, you know, because it was somewhat modified, it was, you know, Skamania County model with this added, this taken away. And I would be curious from Lynn as far as what her interpretation of that, where she would redraft the draft, here's the final draft, and then we can.
I just want, that's right, I just want to be able to see her new verbiage, sign off on it myself.
Yeah.
And say, yes, this is the direction. You know, and if if we're all three consensus of that, then fine, move forward, but.
And if we're not, then we'll have the discussion.
Let's let's have five minutes.
Right, you know, and if it's, then it's fine, and again, it's still just a draft.
Right.
So there's a difference between permitting and licensing, and I think for the new title is more like licensing for a permitted structure.
Right.
Not like permitting it through a CUP or administrative approval.
I want to jump through the least amount of hoops as possible for this. I don't want people to have to go reinvent the wheel or.
So my thought would be is is once we see this from Lynn, and we get agreement, then we have the department heads get together, say if they can get behind that, if there's going to be any hiccups. And then we move from there into a public hearing through us that we provide.
Right.
And then from there, we can move into adoption. At the same time, at that meeting, the department heads, I think it would be good to talk about changing what's changes to the zoning code would need to be taken into consideration in order to make it so that the except ADU can be used.
But I think same deal, that same meeting with the department heads, they should be making notes on what other areas of the zoning code might need a tweak to. So we can get it in front of that, since we're all going to be in the same room.
It is not just zoning code, like Title twelve, transportation standards, health maybe, because they use the state code anyway, so that, you know, that's more difficult for them to make changes. And and I think I mentioned this to to all of you individually, is that zoning ordinance is stated. So there's a lot of change.
Yeah, I mean, that zoning code should be updated, it's it's very old.
Most of our code should be updated.
It should be.
But you know, there's strings tied to those.
Yeah. The the interesting part is is going to be doing, I don't know, multiple facets at multiple times. I mean, we obviously have Title twelve Room Committee starting to work on that project and just kind of incorporating everything at the exact same time, since we're doing so many things at once.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so I guess my purpose, I think I get that across, is right now is some challenge to allow short term rentals for all parcels.
Right.
So there's some exception.
We might make an ordinance that makes it legal, but it's still illegal until we fix the rest of it.
Yes, yes, I just want.
I would say it's illegal, it's just not, it wouldn't be permitted, any like that we have, we have codes that allow all kinds of activities that you can't do every activity in every zoning code across the county.
More illegal than they already are, so let's just, one thing at a time, we'll move.
We have, and I will be curious to hear, because I know, you know, ADUs were a lightning rod, as as Moji said, or whether they will be or not, if the idea, because there was, that was a carefully crafted compromise to, that was specific about not using them for short term rentals, but that, again, that was in twenty fourteen. We have, you know, six years of experience now with them, and, you know, for the most part, we have not, all the issues that the folks that were opposed to ADUs never happened, you know, so.
Sky didn't fall.
The sky did not fall, it did not double the density in the county, we, you know, that we, they've been very limited in their use, they have, we haven't, we, to my knowledge, we have had no issues with them at all. And so that kind of provision before, it's time to take a look at that and see, you know, what's the difference.
You know, there's some, like, we have a distance provisions in our code, you know, how close your ADU can be sighted, like the square footage and how many veterans you can have.
Yes, you do.
You you have that, right?
My mother-in-law is way too close to my house.
Yeah. That was on purpose. Yeah, so yeah, I'll be, I'll be curious as far as, you know, hopefully, maybe it's much ado about nothing, maybe nobody's going to really care.
Of the process.
The public process.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Moji.
No, I I think we're going to get squeaky wheel screaming about a lot of these things, but I don't know that it's the majority scream or a squeaky wheel scream.
Well, as always, I'll, you know, I'll listen, and if there's legitimate concerns, then we can help to mitigate. Fine.
If it's five percent of the population screaming and the other.
Well, it's always, that's, that's always hard as far as to gauge, because that is, that is always hard, it's like you don't know how, you know, how widespread is it, you can't send every question to the voters to.
Right, and that's the thing, and the, when you, when you hold a public hearing about this, the only people that are going to show up are either going to be the renters or the squeaky wheels.
Right.
Joe Public, which is ninety percent of them out there, either don't know, don't care, don't have it, or it ain't a big enough issue for them without, you know, standing in front of the grocery store and taking a random poll.
Right.
Which weird things I find are doing.
Okay, so before lunch, one thing I think we can talk about is getting our committees filled. We've got that on the website. We need, on the website, I think we need a news flash on the front page. We need probably a better link on on face of our page, so that people know, because I have a hard time finding.
I've enjoyed it.
Yeah, it's there, you just, it's, we need to make it a little more user friendly.
Work your way through.
But in the same respect, I think now would be the time we put something in the newspapers and let let the newspapers know we're looking for these positions. I, the one thing I would like to do is, is since we're, we're not the three months ahead of time, you know, we're in it, we narrow that schedule up and say, we're going to be taking applications between this state and this state. Maybe three weeks or two weeks for the applications, and then we'll start going through them. Because we've got a bunch that we need to.
We got to get a point.
We got to get a point, he's done it.
What, how many of these, and just quickly, how many of these renewals, whatever that Mr. McClure is talking about, are actually citizens sitting on? As opposed to, oh, this one's housed by fish and wildlife, and this one's tribal, and this one's a Department of Ecology. You know, those are fine, we're, we're obviously reappointing those people, but if there's any plain Jane citizens sitting on there, those need to hit the same whatever, natural resources or whatever, you know. Also, I still want to bring up that I believe we should have, even if it's a short term, six month something, some kind of a solar panel board, where we have pro solar, anti solar, maybe a developer to get some commonality in there. Even if it's a temporary thing, and I personally don't want that going to a already formed natural, you know, or a natural resources type of board.
Why is that, do you think? I mean, explain that, because I'm, I'm not taking a position.
Because it's a natural resources board, I want, I want people pro and con on the board. If there's already five people on that natural resources board, unless you want to interview them and find out that, yeah, two are pro and two are con, and one is undecided.
Okay.
I I don't think you're getting the the voices heard by the people that we should be listening to the voices of. And I don't, I I don't know why it can't be a specific subcommittee just for solar, just for, you know, because honestly, I think if 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 there's some way whether we do it that way, or we have a public hearing next week, next month, that we give the the solar group couple hours to speak, we give a call in a developer to speak, if we can facilitate getting them in the same room, and we can alleviate a lot of pain for them and us in the future. And that was kind of one of my thinkings of the solar board as well. I I think if you have a natural resources board looking at it, you're going to, I don't know if I'd use the word offend them. But, and I don't know, I have talked to but they're going to feel left out of the process, because they don't have a a person involved in it. So then if you're going to do that, why do it? Anyway, sorry.
This late.
I was just going to bring up that you actually have not approved your resolution yet.
Right.
I did send it to the PA for approval last year for him, I've not heard back yet. Do you want to give that at least on the consent agenda, whether you?
I want to hear from him before we do it. I I don't want to sign something in the, something that he's going to have a problem with. And this is why I think I think there's a couple of appointments that should go through before this process, but if you guys want them to go through this process, that's fine, but there's going to be a lot of, lot more of them. When is the first planning meeting, do you know?
They didn't have one this last month, and I don't think.
I'm sorry for interrupting, I believe.
So I thought I heard.
Put up on the first of March.
That's what I thought, it was going to be first of March, and obviously, they're not making that one, we're not, we're not appointed by then. You know, now Board of Adjustments may not be a big hurry, but it it sounds like at least one of Dave's choices is going to be a reappoint, so they would be already up to speed. But.
Yeah, looks at this point, it's the planning commission's March fifteenth, there is a Board of Adjustment on March first. At least it's on the calendar, I think there is.
Just a reoccurring.
It is.
Whether or not they use it or not, they are actually having.
What do you think we have for a chance of reviewers to form on this from PA today, and we can get this thing rolling and in the newspaper and moving? And if we do that, and we put it in next week's newspaper, we can by second week in March, we could be reviewing applications.
Second week in March, you're going to need somebody on that board. So it's it's going to make it crunch time, is my point.
Well, I don't know if if the planning commission meeting has a decision, or if it's a workshop or what they have, so we just need to find out from from Moji where that sits. And I definitely won't be wanting to appoint the person who's filling my position unless it goes through this process, so.
Well, then we should probably get with Dave to find out how many citizens on the boards he's got over there. So we're trying to throw just the short list out there to the paper, or are we throwing the long list for things that might be replaced a year from now?
Well, I think we can do, as far as the paper, maybe we can have, I mean, I I want folks to have attention to the short term especially, but also maybe there's some reference to.
Discuss the.
Yeah, as far as the long term, because it's like, here's all the different things, and we will, we will be adopting this more formal appointment process, and if you're interested, then.
We know the one planning, we know the one Board of Adjustment, well, two planning, because you got one to replace you over there.
We've got a lot of appointments, we've got all the documents, I guess the main thing is, is someone needs to sit down with Lou, so Lou can write an article on it.
Yeah.
And and we can really.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I need a, I I'm more than happy to sit down with Lou and kind of give the gist of the the whole program, I would just like a list of what are those names on the short list that we need filled in the next.
He has it.
Including Mr. McClure?
Oh, yeah, they're all on that big.
The big dossier list.
The big master list, if we can crop that down to a short list of the things we're really pushing in the next twenty one days kind of thing.
That's what you want, advertise, not directing the public back to the.
No, it'll direct them towards the main thing, I just want to be able to present Lou a short list of, this is
Totally.
Here's the short list of things we're we're short for time on.
Right.
Yeah, no, if I have a short list.
Either the appointments that are currently or very soon going to be.
Or already expired.
Or are expired right now.
Thinking about refilling.
Right.
Right, I can get you a shortcut, it's easy.
And then waiting on the prosecutor, and I'll go talk to Lou, I mean, I don't know that he's depending on if we get all this crammed through today, I imagine he can get it in the paper by next week, as long as we give him info by Thursday. If he's interested, but I've talked to him before, and he sounded like he was interested.
Is the board indicating there, you want this as an add-on for this afternoon, or would you prefer to have it noted on the agenda for the public to see for approval from next week? And that is a question.
Well, I think the resolution that, you know, we're going to adopt, we're still waiting to hear back from the PA.
Right.
I think we should reach out to the PA again, and see if. I think we should um, reach out to the P A again and see if. Because I would like to know, I I can't see that there's any fatal flaws with it. I I don't know what those would be, but. So I would at least from a planning perspective, plan to assume there's not going to be any. Significant change, maybe a tweak or something in the that the resolution's okay with the process that we've come up with. And I guess because at the last, you know, because I know how government works, it takes us to get it on the agenda to do all this stuff. There's nothing that says we can't do that. And then if there's some big thing, you just pull it. You don't take action on it. But it's really hard to add things at the last.
My worry is 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 come out with a big press release. And then, you know, week after that, go whoops.
Yeah, but I don't see that. Like, we know we have vacancies. We know we always have had, we just didn't have a. Formal process or people applying. We always have. You know, advertised of a sword. That's no different than this is that we have these vacancies. You could do the story right now. That we have vacancies right now. We want people to apply for them. Put your name in, throw your hat in the ring, let us know.
I have a document to provide Lou that is a. It kind of goes over, it has a link to the webpage that has all the application and all the boards and all that kind of stuff. Where he can go kind of do his own research there, but a short list of the things that we're really looking for in the next twenty one days. Um, and all that documentation on a piece of paper all come in, whatever to went tomorrow. Thursday, whenever you get it done and and go out and meeting with him, but that's good with you guys and. We might still reach out to you guys for comments and.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's let's get moving on it. We can do more. We, I mean.
Okay, can we go back? Let's let's have, since we have time and it's, uh, we don't have any other schedules, public meetings, so. And we aren't, it's always so, it's challenging for us to have conversations because we have to do them in this room. Uh, let's go back to the Solar Committee. I want to, I want to kind of talk through that. No, I just really, I I want to understand. Again, I'm not taking a position one way.
Right, no, my thinking on it is is. There's obviously.
Who are they advising and what would be the purpose?
Well, they're just advising us, I guess I would say on a more. What do citizens on both sides think needs to happen around here? Um, do. Um, and it's also, I guess, it was a way to show the public that we are listening. It's a way to show the public, we do care about what you say and it is just an advisory role to us. Uh, where then we can look at what they say and decide whether we want to go forward and and. Open an E O Z or not, uh, or just make an ordinance for solar issues or not. Um, or just educating the public. Um, but I don't think having a whatever Natural Resources Board, uh, which is. Looks to me like they're all expired on there anyway. You'd have to reappoint all new ones for it. Um, and when it's really only looking at a single topic, which would be solar. If that's necessarily. Uh, going to give those citizens that want to waste a voice, uh, now. There's, I think there's calm and rational citizens on that side. They can sit on that board and be fine. And there's other ones that I wouldn't want to appoint to that board because I don't think they can be calm and rational. But it it would just be a a place for them to get their voices heard. Uh, with no guarantees that there's an outcome when it gets back to us.
Okay. Okay, that's some thought. Trying to think, we have historically, we have, I'm trying to think of. An example, we have, it's it's not. It wasn't ever repealed, uh, but the, I I don't know if the term, if even had terms, but we did have a. Solid Waste Marketing Advisory Committee that was a small group. That we had folks that was the same. It it was not the same in that it was, it wasn't about. A specific, you know, potentially um, controversial land use issue. It was, it was. You know, it was to provide advice to the board about um. Efforts the county should be or shouldn't be taking in marketing the landfill. So it's not like there's no precedent for it. Okay, I'll give it some thought as far as from my perspective. Any comments I? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, my first.
More concerns.
Yeah, my first thought is is it it concerns me. And I would, I my first thought is, is if we're reconstituting the Land Natural Resources Board. Um, solar definitely fits into that because a lot of solar is going to be on ag land. Um, that has a broad swath of interested parties, whether for or against solar. All of those appointments need to be reappointed and we're going to go through.
Those need to be changed.
Huh?
They need to be changed.
That's what I mean. All those positions.
Reappointed.
No, yeah. Um, and and they have to apply for it just like anybody else. Um, and that would be the right place to have that discussion at a broad scale that people could. That they could give advisement to us three. Um, we are also going to be heavily involved in this, uh, because we're going to go on this tour and it comes up every day and. Um, if we are to build like a solar ordinance. The the place I would see that coming from would be that kind of a broad based board that looks at everything from. Economic development to environmental to um, agricultural issues. That's where I see that that would have the best. Chance of something that's. A settled agreement would come from this is a broad based board. So that would be my first thought, having just a a forum for two people for and two people against. Um, to me, that's that's just a recipe for disaster. Um, you just, it's like putting two people against, you know, head to head. Um, and then have giving like the C S group two hours and a solar company two hours. Yeah, I can see, I can see us having a workshop on solar like in in letting them come and present for two hours. I don't know if it needs to be in front of a subcommittee or anything because. I want to sit in on that anyways. I mean, if somebody's going to talk for two hours, I, you know, we get. I don't know, daily emails, it seems from C S, um, and I read them all and all their different information. So I am trying to get. As educated as possible on this issue. Um, I also look at the Facebook posts and. See everybody who says that we aren't doing anything with regards to this. So I'm very cognizant of the situation and I'm trying to think of the most logical way through from one end to the other.
Yeah, I would say for me, I'm more inclined to. Have a, uh, I guess a information gathering hearing before the board and. If they feel. Because I, again, same thing that Commissioner Henderson said, we're all getting, it's not like we're not hearing from folks. We are hearing from folks. It's in a less formal way because we're getting emailed and I do, I read them all. I get phone calls from them. I I talk to them. Again, we have no project in front of us. They're what they're, what they're asking for is that legislative actions totally appropriate to. We can all talk to whoever we want to talk to at this point. I guess if the. The question that's really before or they want to be before us, because we've talked about this and at this point it's the status quo. If we want to consider not doing that, where we would either open up the E O Z. Or or write some sub, you know, solar, solar farm. You know, sub ordinance that's in there, then the decision to do that would be the board's decision. And the board could, could, uh, I guess entertain discussion on that information to that. I don't see a. If 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 it's.
If I, if I hear you correctly, you're saying at this point, because of our current policy, you don't see the need for that. Unless the board decides they want to make an amendment or open the E O Z or have some solar ordinance. Then we go there possibly.
Right, but if they're right, because I guess at this point, because that's what the folks, the industry is not. Um, advocating for us to do that. They obviously, the status quo is. It's it is allowed in the E O Z. It's allowed in the zones that they're thinking about potentially building them. So we're not getting any push from the industry to even have a discussion about it. We are getting a push from folks that don't want, uh.
Right, and I get that and I I totally understand.
And again, I'm not necessarily, I'm I'm willing to, let's have that discussion.
Well, and I think we will have that discussion over the next. Year or two of this process, and I think the citizens need to. Uh, understand that and and I think they will and we will have hearings and we will possibly have. Uh, motions for a point or amendments. Um, later. But, uh, so, yeah, no, I'm I'm fine with that the way it is. Um, I did, uh.
Because I will, because I will say for the record, I've actually been contacted by just as many people. That are actually in favor of.
Right.
So this idea, they're not necessarily writing, calling in every public commentary, but I have been contacted that. I would say it's rough and do they have, most of them have some vested interest? In seeing projects go forward, they're either, there's going to be some. You know, maybe they're going to be a leaseholder. Maybe they're, again, I don't have any issue with that, just like the most of the. Folks that don't want to see the projects go forward, have a vested interest in them, they're not going, so they're, it's an equal thing.
Well, I get it, but I think you guys are thinking my whole subcommittee on solar is a. Uh, committee that would. Uh, push for not allowing solar and changing that policy and that that is my thought of the committee. My thought of the committee is. Be, again, they would have to find neutral ground. This is pro and anti. Finding neutral ground. Where are they going to find neutral ground? They're going to find neutral ground on our lack of ordinances. Um, be it setbacks or whatever that they think we might need to add as an amendment or a specific solar ordinance. Hearing from both sides in that way, this isn't a solar subcommittee to, you know, ban solar, reopen the E O Z for a thought of banning solar. That is not in any way, shape or form on public record. Uh, my stance as of right now, and I don't think that the. That's not what I'm looking for out of it. Um, I'm I'm looking for common ground. Um, not. Uh, um, anything else.
Right.
Anyway, just chew on that, think about it.
Well, and and I will say honestly, part of my decision about what we do. If anything going forward is going to be based on, we got a solar tour coming up on the twenty fifth. I want, now I've been out there. But I always, I was out there by myself with, you know, and I wanted, I want us to see, we may come back from that. And we may have a legitimate cause to have a discussion about, yeah, maybe we need to look at some things and. Change some things with the existing. I am totally open.
Right, no, my solar board thought was just bringing it back up because we haven't talked about it in about.
Right.
Fifteenth of last month, just keeping it uh, out there, um, keeping it. In your mind for future consideration and, you know, might be the middle of March where we talk about it again. Um, and decide whether we care. It might be the middle of the summer. I don't know. Um, just I think if we are going to, you know, if our plan is to do absolutely nothing. Then no, we don't need in a committee for any of it, right? Um, if you want to hear from the public, go stand on the courthouse lawn with the sign that says, tell me what you think about solar. Somebody will stop and talk to you. Uh, if you think you might need some insight on whether we need any. Protections or ordinances or changing to our code or amendments without opening the E O Z. Um, just to. I guess I would say put those safeguards that we all pretty much believe will be in the process. Uh, by the time this is all said and done, I don't see five hundred percent bucks. Uh, but the people that are going to be affected by the process, that's what they think. Um, so if we can put those things that we know are going to more than likely be in the process into an ordinance. We can alleviate a a whole bunch of head problems and it also gives our planning director guidance. When she's going through the process on what we want in the process. Um, you know, we are the legislative authority of this county. We are the one that set rules and regulations. And you're telling your planning director to make this happen without giving her guidance on what those rules or regulations are. So she's got to be one for herself because currently there are them. Uh, it's the wild, wild west, as somebody I know likes to use. Uh, so you're making Moshe the legislative authority in the county when she's uh, doing the permits and.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that statement. I think the ordinances have. That is the adopted, that's the law of Quick Attack County as adopted by the legislative authority. The directions are in there. Is there some discretion in there? We always talk about, we want to be able to have some discretion. And there's, it's, and I I I'm not going to. Get into a, uh, it's, it's just, I guess, the the idea, I I understand the idea of a citizen. Committee, but I don't, where people want to feel like their voice is being heard. And I just don't see anything, at this point, I don't see what that would accomplish other than. They're going to be ju, all they're going to do is they're going to get in a room and they're going to fight with each other. And again, they want their voice to be heard. Who's listening to their voice? They need to be, we need to be having their voice being heard. By the decision makers and I would assert right now, their voice is being heard. Their voices, I'm getting all of those. I'm reading those, I'm listening to those. For folks that are are frustrated, which I read the emails too, that there's only certain people are listening to them. And others of us are not, just because. Just because somebody doesn't necessarily agree with you doesn't mean they didn't hear you.
I agree.
And I think there's a, there's a disconnect there.
I would say some of those emails are unjust.
Yeah, as far as that it's not, um, you know, and I also recognize that these projects. You know, potential or construct, you know, that are under construction, these are going to take place in your district and they're going to take place in my district. It is highly unlikely anything's ever going to be in District One. It's just not because of the way the sun is.
It's going to take place in your district possibly until rezoning and then they'll all be in my district.
Oh, as far as, oh, after redistricting. Yeah, that could be, it could all be, that's possible too, depending.
Well, I don't know that it will make the change this year, but ten years from now, then it'll probably, that whole area, it will probably all be free.
Right. That's possible. So I would say at this point, I am totally open to, after I go on the solar tour, I am not opposed. To us having a discussion.
Well, and I figure.
Are we still, do we want to take some input from folks about, should we open things up? Should we contemplate this? I'm open to that.
I would like to have the solar tour. I would like to have another, I don't know if it needs to be a workshop, but at least discussion with Moshe about solar with us. Uh, and then from there we can move forward on uh, whether we want to do a hearing or a subcommittee or anything like that. Um, so that's kind of was my thinking the whole way along on it.
Okay.
Um, I do understand there is plenty of time. To do anything we feel like doing.
Okay, any other comments since we've got it?
Um, one thing I wanted to bring up, um, if anybody's seen that bill about. There was the Supreme Court decision uh, that overturned the no overtime for farm workers. The dairy and then the Curtis King submitted a bill so that. So we had a bill from nineteen fifty seven that said they were exempt from overtime. The Supreme Court overturned it. And they didn't give any direction. And so the, how it says is that all of those businesses are liable for. Three years of those back wages. And then there's thirty eight lawsuits already that have been filed. Um, and my question then is, what will that do to our dairies? Um, and my question then is, what will that do to our dairies in District One? Yeah, what will that do to Dicky Farms? What's that gonna do to our other people? Um, so I reached out uh, to Dicky Farms. And they're keeping a close eye on it. And if some movement doesn't happen, just that payment, three years of back. And then that bill that Curtis King submitted.
Supreme Court say they had three years of back? Where did this three years of back that come from?
That's, that's, that's legislative, I think it's legislation.
I was gonna say, Supreme Court usually doesn't do that, so.
No, but see, the problem was, is the Supreme Court, the dissenting opinion said that it's wrong, because these people were operating under the law.
Right.
The Supreme Court said that the law was unconstitutional, and you have to go back and pay it for three years. And find it all back. The dissenting opinion said, that's ridiculous. If it was, if they were following the law, how can you then go and put them out of business? Cause that time and a half for three years of back is. The Capital Press said it could, and likely it's gonna hit not just dairy, it's gonna be all ag, and it's a two billion dollar bill. How do you come out of two billion dollars in the midst of COVID? So there's a very good chance that many of our agricultural businesses could go out of business if this doesn't go. And the other thing is, many of them could go out of business because the lawsuits have already started. And I think that's something that we as a board, we should take a stand on. We can discuss that that this afternoon or. Think about it at lunch.
Yeah, I need, I need to read more into that one. Not that I'm opposed to it, but it's kind of like your forest thing. I hate putting my name on something that I'm not.
Right.
Research.
You don't hate dairies.
No, I don't hate dairies. I don't hate no cows. But I I wanna know.
Yeah.
I wanna know the finer details, including taxes and cost to citizens and. Uh, not just, I mean, sure, I love the idea. But I wanna know the ramifications uh, of the thing too, so I need to read it. What bill number was that, by the way? I need to go have a time to look at it during lunch.
Getting it for you right now. Well, the bill has been changed, Senate, Senate Bill fifty one seventy two. So Curtis King wrote in his version of the bill that there would be no. Three year back, and then the Democrats on the committee.
I don't know how he can legislatively say that. Yeah, the Supreme Court's demanding that back pay is.
The Supreme Court didn't demand the back pay. The Supreme Court only ruled that the law was unconstitutional that was instituted in nineteen.
Got it, so nobody's demanded that the. I guess I would say the farm workers filed the suit more than likely.
Is there maybe there, is there a three-year window for? Payroll dispute, you can only go back for years. So that's probably where the three years.
That was probably the farm workers saying, we want the three-year back legislatures now, so this may not have a tax burden to the people. Because this may not be the state paying the backs. So, yeah, no. Right, but it would either be the farmers paying it back where there is no back.
Right.
It wouldn't be taxpayers paying it back.
Right.
Uh, so that was the part I was far more worried about signing on to, so more, let me read it during lunch more than likely, I'm gonna go.
Okay, if nothing else, then we will adjourn for lunch. We'll be back at one o'clock for more. Uh, exciting conversation.
Are we doing lunch?
I'm, I actually have to, I'm gonna go meet with Mochi, I'm hoping, on personal. I'm working on a project.